The order of the meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission and we'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy, once again, make sure your cell phone is turned off. Any action taken on conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following the meeting. A written appeal to the Planning Commission decision is filed in the planning office by Mondays, September 29th at 5:00. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the county commission for a hearing on Tuesday, October 14th at 9:15. Meetings of the county commission are held in this same room. At this time, the planning commission will consider the consent agenda. The minutes for the August 25th meeting are included in the consent agenda. And we'll start with that. Are there any objections to the planning commission members of either consent agenda items? There are two of them with the minutes. Next, I will read each item of the consent agenda. If any member of the audience objects to the item, please raise your hand to the item to remove the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Okay, so we'll read those numbers. Item one is approval of the minutes. Item two is a conditional use permit, number 1442, to allow a single-family dwelling on the property legally described. It's basically on Hartford Township. Petitioner is Brian Albert. Anyone in the audience object to this particular item? Number three, conditional use permit to allow semi-trailer sales and service on the property. And it's basically the Renner Exit is where this one is located. If I'm not misinterprets, it's easy to say that since it's a Renner Exit industrial park. So, any objections to the audience for this item? If not, we will, we will, I'll move the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. All favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Okay, if your items two or three, you are free to go and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have two items on the regular agenda. Well, following our, first, I need a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion through second, all favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. For the regular agenda, we'll follow our normal hearing procedure by requesting planning staff to present a report on each item and then request to the petitioner to come to the podium and make a statement and answer questions. Anyone from the audience wishing to address the item shall be recognized by the chairman. Move to the podium, state the name and address for the record, planning commission, then we'll discuss the matter and take appropriate action. Thank you for your cooperation. And start with item number four.
All right, Kevin Huckman, planning commission, or planning department. Item number four is an agricultural tourism permit, number 1401, to allow home winery on the property. This winery is located approximately five and a half miles to the west of Sioux Falls, near Wall Lake Corner. The comprehensive plan has listed this corner as a rural service center, so it is in an area where there's nearby commercial properties and nearby residents both. To the west, it's ag land. To the east, it is residences and commercial land. And the winery itself is going to be located in the middle of the property, so it has a pretty good buffer from anything nearby. The site plan requires a one acre minimum of fruit to be grown on the site. Oh yeah, this is, I should point this out to you. This is looking to the east on the Wall Lake Corner. This is the agriculture land looking to the west. For the site plan requires a minimum of one acre of fruit to be grown on the site for ag tourism permit and winery. This is located where the fruit is proposed to be in the site plan. If he uses kind of that whole front area, it'd be one acre. I should note that on the drawn portion, there's only a half acre, so he's going to have to find another half acre of land roughly, but I'm sure that's possible to get one acre on the site. Wine production and tasting and sales will be in the former residence on the property that was vacated when the new house was built on the site. No other residents or no other buildings would be used as part of the winery. They'll just be on site. And the event space, oh yes, this more winery. Event space will be located on the yard to the west of the property, since events are allowed in this ag tourism permit. Parking for events and the property will be located mostly along the west side. Seven spaces will be required for the size of the parking area, for the size of the building, plus more parking spots are required for any sort of events, which will be located at the southeast corner of the property. He's been carved out an acre or so of land out of the field for parking. No parking at any time will be allowed on Highway 42. For the operation of the site, he's requesting approximately to operate the winery from noon to 10 o'clock on any given day. And also, the initial is going to be seasonal, but he does plan on, if necessary, expanding it to all year round. But it'd be seasonal for the summer and fall seasons. Events are initially supposed to be small, but he does plan on growing, so they can get bigger. As I said, the event space will be located in the current yard to the west, and he has parking for approximately 150 cars, so he can get plenty of people out in that event space. Any event is going to require a temporary use permit for that as well. The proposal makes all requirements for ag tourism as a special use, which means we could have permitted it as is with the requirements and with the ordinance. However, the petitioner is requesting an additional 400 square feet of sign, approximately 400 square feet of sign. Oops. Yeah. The ag tourism permit allows, as part of the permit, 32 square feet of sign space to be located on the site. This site is located near commercial. For example, if it was zoned commercial, which is still going to be zoned ag, it would allow two square feet per linear foot of building, so it'd be approximately 120 square feet for a kind of an approximation of what this site would have been if it was something else. So it is well above the ordinance requirements and limitations. The recommendations of the, and conditions of the staff only have to include 32 square feet of sign space because the 400 square feet is beyond zoning regulations. But that being said, I'll also note that this is along a busy road and it's long distance back from the road, so some additional signage may be nice for being able to be better viewed from the highway. So, staff recommends approval of ag tourism 14-1 with the following conditions. The winery shall be secondary to the principal use of the property as a residential site and to the use of the property for agricultural production. If the residential use or agricultural protection on the site ceases, the winery operations shall cease. The owner occupant of the dwelling shall be engaged in the winery production. The winery shall have a limit to two full-time, non-resident employees, not to exceed four full-time employees on the site. All aspects of the wine production and sales shall conform to the provisions of South Dakota law 35-12. All aspects of the wine production, sales shall conform to the provisions of Article 12, 13 of the 1990 revised zoning ordinance of Minnehaha County. Wine tasting and sales shall be considered an accessory use to the winery. Wine tasting and sales shall be contained within the former residence that was marked on the provided site plan. A maximum of four special events with expected attendance of more than 450 people per day shall be allowed in any calendar year. No special event shall exceed four days in duration. A minimum of 60 days prior to any special event, the petitioner shall submit an event plan in the form of a temporary use permit for the planning director approval. The event plan shall include the location of proposed parking, numbers and placement of sanitary facilities such as porta potties or garbage dumpsters, a plan for proposed signage for the event, and an emergency plan detailing procedures to be followed in case of severe weather and any provisions of first aid. A private event shall not exceed 450 people in size because a parking plan does not support the need of parking for more people. Mrs. Basin, the shown parking area containing enough space for approximately 150 cars, one car per three people. The hours of operation for the tasting room, public, and private events shall be within 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., including setup and breakdown of events. A minimum of seven parking spaces must be available for the winery and tasting room, and all event parking must be contained on-site as specified in the event plan. No parking shall be allowed in South Dakota Highway 42 at any time. That all outdoor lighting shall be thoroughly cut off and fully shielded designed to prevent direct spillage of light beyond the property boundaries. The former dwelling shall be used for the winery and tasting room only. No persons shall reside in any part of the former dwelling at any time. A building permit is required for any remodeling that requires structural changes and additions to the proposed winery and tasting room. Any expansion or changes to the site will require application and approval from the planning director. Expansions include, but are not limited to, additions to the winery and tasting building, utilizing a building for producing, selling, or tasting wine other than those specified in the site plan, and any request for increased capacity in private or public events. That the total allowed permanent onsite signage shall not exceed 32 square feet. A building permit is required before any and all permanent signs are to be erected. That the planning and zoning department reserves the right to enter and inspect the winery operation at any time after proper notice to the owner, to ensure that the property is in full compliance with conditional use permit conditions and approval of the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. All conditions.
Any questions?
Yeah, Kevin, you indicated at the beginning there, there's a requirement of a minimum of one acre of fruit that must be planted there.
Yes.
Is that in, in South Dakota codified law, or is that part of the, the county stipulation?
That is part of the county stipulations to be part of the ag tourism permit.
It requires a one acre.
Yeah.
Okay. I noticed that that was not included in the, the conditions. Did I miss that? Or is that assumed that if it meets the requirements of?
Well, it's a requirement, but if you, if you'd like, we can, I mean, you can add a condition.
Oh, add the conditions. Okay.
Add vision 18, just spell it out for them.
And Mr. Chairman, rural service center, this area that intersection is designated as that, would you clarify the, the scope of what a rural service center means?
A rural service center is an area that has traditionally, or been an area where people from the community or in the county do business. So, like the Wall Lake gas station at the corner, there's the commercial businesses at the corner. So people are coming in and going, and generally, they're located along highway intersections. So.
Okay. I would disagree that this is what this is. This is away from the rural service area. There are two residences between this and the corner. This would be like what we ran into north of Renner where it was spot zoning to do the commercial thing north. It'd be the same thing if this were.
Well, I think what Kevin's saying is that, at, right at that Wall Lake corner, it's identified at the Wall Lake corner, but.
This is not a part of that area.
Not, not necessarily, but it does fit into the ag tourism because it's zoned ag. I'm, I think he's just saying it's near that ag service area, or he's, sorry, the rural service area. But we're not rezoning this property. It stays zoned commer, of ag.
That was, that was my last question.
We're not rezoning it, it's still ag property.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll have a few later. Let's hear from the petitioner then. There's no other questions for Kevin?
Good evening. I'm Rick Larson, and I live at 46284, 265th Street, Hartford, South Dakota. And the big question is, is how we got here tonight? First of all, I want to take the time to, being a lifelong resident of Minnehaha County, this first chance I've ever had to be in front of the board, so it's been an interesting meeting, to say the least. But I'd like to thank you for your attention. The whole thing is, is, was intent here of what I was up to. My intent, I think the reason why I'm here, first and foremost, before I started the project, I came into planning and zoning prior to me doing anything, and found out what the stipulations are to do a winery. Why did I want to do a winery? Well, the, it was kind of in my heart a little bit. If you see, and I do, I think you guys showed, I appreciate some help here, possibly putting this on there. When we built on the property, one thing that we didn't realize is, is the home that had been added on to three different times is actually a historical Minnehaha County home. If you look at the top photo of the, of the home there, and you see the roof line, that was actually Onwall Lake, one of the first homes. It was Onwall Lake, prior to the year 1900. So, when I was talking about, after I built my present home, about somebody come in, I was ready to give the house away, do something with it. It was added on so many times, it wasn't cost efficient for anybody to move the home out. So, it got deemed storage, and that's where it sat. And we, my wife and I had to make a decision on what we were able to do. Well, I finally said to Lowell Graves, who's a neighbor of ours, I said, Lowell, I said, I think I'm just gonna, he's a farmer near the area, helps me out a little bit, I said, I think we're gonna probably just either get a permit to light a match or do something like that. And he said, well, I guess it doesn't really have any whole sentiment of value, you know, and he seemed troubled by it. And I went on to find out that here, this home had been actually around this particular area. So at that point in time, I wanted to conserve the home. And I got to thinking on what I would do, you know, and then I, that's where I came up with the idea of having a winery. The intent of the actual, I think the reason so why I'm, when I found out that there was no conditional use permit was needed to do what my intent was, Kevin was very helpful in helping me get to that initial meeting. And I said, okay, there's no conditional use permit needed, I can do this as long as I follow the things that I read. So I did that. And I got a call sometime later from Kevin, said, you will need a conditional use permit. I said, oh. And he didn't really elaborate why at that time. There was nothing that was written on the ceiling or on the rooftop at that point in time. So I took the time then, and I wanted to, I reread it, and I said, well, I don't think I need a conditional use permit. But I didn't say anything else. I then went ahead and I went forward, kept going with my plans. I even made an additional phone call in to staff and Kevin. I said, hey, haven't heard anything from you guys. We're about three, four weeks down the road. I mean, is everything okay? You know, is everything fine? He made a point to say, we haven't even looked at that application that I did apply for and paid the 250. He said it wasn't even looked at. Basically, what has brought attention to tonight's event was that I believe the building inspector had driven by and noticed, I think Kevin had one of the pictures of it partially being done. And at that point in time, this is when I was aware that three-quarters of the word "wine" may be considered a sign. And my intent was never to have this as my sign. If this, if my intent was to have this as my sign, okay, I would have put Wall Lake Winery with my logo on it. I would have put Wine for Sale. I thought of it as decoration, because as driving around the county, growing up here all my life, like I mentioned earlier, I many times see the historical barns that have the, the sides that I have seen farm names on and different things on the side. So, trust me, it wasn't my initial creativity to come up with putting something on the sign. So I had seen it done, and you'd seen it done on a historical, I said, wow, that'd be neat to do. So that's what, what my intent was, was to basically follow things that I felt I had seen out in the county, thank you, that I had seen out in the county before, and not make that my sign. Had I thought that was my sign, I am in business here in Sioux Falls, I do understand there's limits on the size of signage you can do and everything like that. So, I certainly do apologize to staff if they believe my intent was to make this my sign. I did read the 32-foot square sign prior to this property being for this use. The county did approve the Dakota Wild Game Bird Farm, which was owned by a Kent family. And that particular sign is still on-premise. It is 32 square foot, it is framed, and will be then put up along the road and with some nice landscaping and everything like that around it. And that was my, once I change, obviously, the face of it, will have a logo and then so people can drive by and identify the, the property and the signage. So, I guess my whole hopes are that I don't have to ruin my roof line and my expensive new shingling job that's up there. I would like to, I would hope that the, the board could possibly understand that certainly I was trying to do something different with the decor and the decoration of it. As you see, I've made a, a color change, and I matched the color change of the building to the lettering, so I made that look and everything like that in, in the same type of color. So, with that, if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
You have any, I'll start asking questions. Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, question, Rich. Regarding the liquor license, how, how does that, that work?
Yeah, that's what, one thing that surprised me also, and, and as far as a liquor license goes, as long as you're zoning under this ag tourism, basically, you provide free tasting, and after the tasting, then they are able to purchase bottles of wine through the winery, and then, you know, away they, away they go. So, it is not our intent at this time to apply for a county license for beer and wine. There would never be any liquor. I wouldn't have any need to do that. But I have talked to a couple wineries throughout the counties and things like that, and got their opinion. Some have them, have the beer and wine licenses, and some don't. So, at this point in time, as I'm getting started, I, at this point in time, understand that I'm able to do that type of use, as was described earlier when Kevin was reading through everything.
Okay. Can you fall under the federal permit for wine, a winery, correct?
Yes.
Have you applied for that?
A federal permit?
Yes, for a federal winery permit. These are regulated by ETF if you're producing wine. Have you applied for that?
At this time, no, I have not.
Okay. Because those take a minimum of six months to hopefully get. Those take a while. Okay, so, this is a good location, so the sign, that's 400 square feet, that's 432 square feet you're proposing.
I am proposing that that's not my sign. That's my decoration to my building.
Okay.
Just, Mike, in, in all seriousness, if the word tasting room is on, the winery's on-premise on a lot of those things.
Well, in all seriousness, this is absolutely wrong according to our ordinance. I don't see wine written on any of them. There are wineries around the county who do a very nice job. They're very low-key, they fit into the environment, they aren't in your face like this thing is. I lived in the Wall Lake area. I know Helen Grave who lived in that house. I know Lowell, I've worked for it. As far as I was concerned, when you originally built your new house, this one was supposed to have been tore down. And then you came back a year and a half later and said, oh, I really don't want to tear it down.
No, I was told on storage, it could be made to storage. Before I even had it done, Mike, I, I took my stove out and I unhooked the water to the home and everything like that. And that was five or six years ago. So it wasn't a year and a half later, I think that's, I think you're missing.
It was the next year. I know, I was on this planning commission, we brought it in.
Okay.
Okay, because the same people a mile and a half south of this location, they followed the ordinance, they tore down their old house just like they were supposed to, and then this one comes up and nothing happened. But we're not talking about that today, we're talking about this. Okay? The other thing, my, if we're putting in a winery, okay, it takes at least six months to get that permit. You're supposed to produce with your own grape. And I talked to someone who's actually wrote South Dakota law, basically. He says the minimum grapes are 14 to 15 vines is the minimum, and we're putting in an acre. But the other thing is, okay, so, why would we approve this when you have no grapes? There is, so technically, this is a retail wine outlet, is what it is, until you get your own grapes in place. And I don't know how else to look at that. Because how long, tell me how long it takes to get grapes into production?
Four years.
Okay. Most of them say three, when you ask them, the wineries. Okay, so we're about three years ahead of the horse here.
You can purchase vines, and I did do some investigation on that, and I intend on using that, but you can purchase vines that are basically ahead of the game, as we per se, and you can go instead of just from the seed, you can get them where they're about two years along, and then you have wine within, within two years, I apologize, but they have a good head start. I, I want to say this too. I came into staff, you know, asking before I started. You know, I mean, I want to make that point very, very clear. So you're bringing up this thing, have you, have you applied for a federal wine permit? I spoke to other wineries, and I never was told of a federal wine permit that I needed, but I'm glad to do so. I was never told. I.
It's not spelled out under ordinance, it's not my response, I don't know.
No, it's not. It's not the county's responsibility. If you're gonna do.
I'm not asking.
Produce liquor, produce wine, you have to have a federal license. That is just the business.
And we shall apply for a federal license.
And once again, so you won't have any of your own grapes for at least two years. So we're supposed to approve a wine-selling outlet, which is no more than a liquor store, which is a commercial use.
I don't see it like that.
Well, I know you don't, but that's how I see it. I live in this neighborhood, and that's the way I see it. We got a wonderful wine store here, and I don't see any grapes, no grapes, no vines, what's the deal?
Well, I'm gonna plant the.
Eventually.
Eventually.
Well, you're not gonna plant them this, this fall.
I'll plant them in the spring.
Yes, and it'll be another two years before they produce.
Produce grapes, but other wineries don't always use their own, I mean, wineries don't just start, they buy grapes and bring them in. They buy South Dakota grapes and bring them in and produce wine at these wineries.
I know they all purchase some, but they also grow with their own.
But not right away, they didn't. They have to purchase wines to, purchase the grapes to begin producing the wine.
Well, the ones that have started in this county have all come to us, if you look at them, whether it be Strawberry, or one of the people by Garretson, or wherever, they've had their grapes growing two years, and then they come in and ask to be a winery and get permission. And not, they don't have the cart ahead of the horse, they basically are ready the very next year. That's the way that most of those work. And that's why I'm questioning this one, because I don't see any grapes, I don't see vines. It's just a liquor, it's just a wine sales room.
But I am gonna be producing, there is a winery, it's not in this county, so I don't suppose that that makes a difference, but, I mean, they're, basically, I based it off of, if you go out to Hill City, there is, Valiant Vineyards has a winery there, there's absolutely no grapes whatsoever on the premise at all, but they're able to basically do the type of business structure that I described earlier. I mean, there's absolutely no field of grapes. Back in Vermillion, where they are producing grapes and everything like that there is.
I understand the state law, I've got actually a pred, as far as what a winery is allowed, they have to buy grapes that are produced in the state.
Right. Yeah. Which I will do too. I have to purchase wine.
When?
When I start bottling my wine.
Not this year, not this year, right?
Well, why can't I start bottling my wine as soon as I'm permitted to bottle my wine?
You have to be licensed winery first.
And then I have to buy grapes.
You have to be a licensed winery first.
Right. And I intend to make sure. Right. And I intend to make sure all the licenses are in place and everything.
And that will not be in place in the next six to eight months. That's my concern.
Well, my, I appreciate your concern, but all licenses will be handled correctly. I'm not in a speed trap to hurry up and do this. I'm trying to, I think, one of the things that, that I wish you would kind of notice, that I was trying to restore a historical home.
That's irrelevant to me. What I see is a legal sign that's going to set a precedent in our county. That's what I see. But that's all I have.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Larson, so what's the deal on the sign? Is that, are those shingles or is it-
That's shingles.
You shingled pink or red shingles?
No, no, oh, excuse me, no, they painted. They painted on the shingles. And then it's painted, and then there's an epoxy that goes over the top of it. Can I ask a question of the commission? Has anyone ever seen the words of a farm on the side of a historical barn as you've driven around, possibly a picture of a horse on the side of a barn? When I saw some training, I drove just around our neighborhood, since you're obviously my neighbor, I mean, there's, there's pictures of this around. This is, this is in our county.
But they aren't twenty-eight-foot wine signs.
They're larger. Some of them are. I mean, they're larger farm names. I'm just saying, that's where my whole thing went, is I saw that and I thought, this would be also-
I want to come back to one thing, Rich, before we move further.
Sure.
On this, we're talking the sign. Okay. You said that you were not told that this was inappropriate by the planning commission or by the planning office. Thirty-two square foot, how did that multiply by more than ten?
Well, again, I, I went with the fact that I was trying to do a decor. I was trying to give it, I was trying to give it that outline, and my thought was, is the farm names that I saw on historical barns and things of that nature, I remember the Land of Lakes barn being outside of town forever, having Land of Lakes on the side of it.
Actually said Lakeview.
Excuse me, Lakeview. I apologize. But you obviously saw that too.
That was before planting and zoning.
Oh, I see. I wasn't aware. But I'm sure that, you know, this type of thing has not been done. This, by the way, I mean, far, I object to the fact that I'm just trying to do a liquor store. I do take offense to that. I'm not selling any liquor and I'm not intending on selling. These are South Dakota-made products. This will be South Dakota, this will be South Dakota fruit, these will be South Dakota jams, this will be South Dakota honey from Devon Bah Honey. These will be, also will benefit other people in the county that raise and produce these type of things. And overall, too, I see we fall under something, ag tourism. We're trying to create tourism throughout, apparently that's something our state wants to do, is to bring tourists in to actually visit South Dakota wineries. So, we can create and show how good our products are. I want to be a part of that. I don't want to open up a liquor store. So, I mean, I appreciate your concern, but that's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to basically produce. And I apologize that I have not got two or three acres of grapes grown. I did not intend to be, I own thirty-three acres there. I could plant twenty-seven acres of grapes. You know, I did not want to produce that many grapes, and as I understand the statutes and the laws, I didn't have to. I had to produce an acre of grapes. I had to plant an acre of grapes. I didn't, I wasn't ever told or what I had ever thought that, well, you've got to start growing them ahead of time. I talked to other wineries before I started this.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to go back to the sign for a minute.
Sure.
So, if you, and I have a question for staff on this too. What does it look like from the highway? But first, let me ask you, if, if you wind up not being in the wine business, what are you going to do with that sign?
Oh, and I'd have to, if, if in other words, my wine business did not-
Yeah, let's say you decided that you were going to go into, you know, something else that was an obsolete sign.
Well, I would take the, I would take the thirty-two-square-foot sign down that, that I, you know, and obviously I'd remove that and take it down. And if that particular business would not work, I would have to, I would assume, take that off of the, of the side of the building. My intent is not to fail.
Right.
Yes.
Now, what's it look like from the highway?
That's, I'm basically standing on the edge of the right of way. I took the sign this morning, and that's basically from the edge of the right of way.
It's a pretty big sign.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? We're starting to rehash old ground. Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to address this? Any discussion? I'll have a couple comments. What are you thinking?
I was just thinking, what if I-
I still get back to precedents. Okay, thirty-two-square-foot is the precedence. That's a four-hundred-square-foot sign. I don't care if it's on the, especially since it's brand-new. So, how many more of those you want around the county? Every time somebody comes in, oh, I can paint that, and then I'll be an ag tourism. And that is inappropriate. The other thing I'd say, I still maintain that until they actually produce wine on site, that this is nothing more than a retail wine store, which is a commercial use. And the county requires you to have a half-acre grapes or an acre, whatever it is, well, that should be in place before the winery permits in. And like I said, also, in talking to the guys, we're at least a year ahead of time as far as this thing being an actual winery, permitted winery. If that's what it is, the winery, then it's, we, let's see, permit first. You've got, and right now, actually technically, what we have is an enforcement issue. We don't have his own issue. He's out of compliance with, what are we going to deal with with our very next item? An enforcement issue. So, why would we approve this with an enforcement issue?
On the other hand, being the, taking the view of, you know, we don't try to discourage entrepreneurial activity in our county.
No, just follow the rules, and we certainly don't. Have we discouraged any of the other wineries from starting out?
No.
No, but there have been other sign violations, I know.
Well, that would not be approved in the Red Rock corridor, I can tell you that. We just went through that whole big deal, getting that all figured out.
Well, what was it, Highway ninety racetrack out there, Houston, Humboldt?
Oh, that one.
Speedway, whatever it is. They had issues on their side. So, what other, Mike, talking about the regulation of this type of operation, is it the Department of Tourism? Is it Agriculture?
It's both. You've got, there's a state permit for this type of thing. It's my understanding if you follow state law. And then you also have to, you have to have an ATF permit.
Would we, would they be able to tell us if this complaint, basically with their permits?
I asked Ty Eichenbaum, who's with the Department of Ag, Bill Price, familiar with that individual, and he referred me to a fellow who's basically a former legislator who basically wrote the law. And he just wanted to come with the grapes, but he said the toughest thing is to get the federal permit to be a winery. Because this particular individual's also right now trying to get a distiller's license, which is tougher yet, because that's becoming more popular to have these private distilleries, which is fine. But it all comes under the ATF, so they get their taxes and all that stuff. That's really what it's about. So, so like I say, that's where I'm coming from. Basically, like I say, it's, as far as I'm concerned, we have an enforcement issue first. How can you approve something that is, that's something that could learn?
Well, I guess I just wonder where the Department of Agriculture or whatever would rule on something like this, Bill. What do you think?
They have nothing on signs.
No, I'm, I'm agreeing on signs. That's two issues. One is the winery, one is the sign, so.
Because what Eichenbaum said was that it all basically ends up back to the federal permit.
So, even if we approve it, he'll still have to get his federal thing, and by then, maybe the grapes will be five years old.
It could be next month. They say six months if they want.
Right.
You got a discussion?
You could, I'm just throwing this out here for an idea, but you could add a condition that says, or make it very clear that they can't operate the sale of the business until you get the one acre of grapes planted. I mean, I, I think that the applicant is correct. Many wineries buy pears and they make pear wine. They buy rhubarb and they make rhubarb wine. So, that's not uncommon, that they may buy someone else's grapes. But it is, it is in our ordinance that they have to have one acre of grapes on, growing on the property. And I think that implies they're growing before there's activity occurring.
To me, that would be a fair compromise.
That leaves off the enforcement thing.
Well, that takes care of the one acre, and now you have to decide to do what, what to do with the sign.
So, if I made a motion to support what he said, what is that motion? It's to allow him to-
It would be something like-
Begin moving into the business with planting and-
Be conditioned on federal permits or whatever. Well, actually, you could have two. Not operate winery until the federal permit is in place. And number nineteen would be, one acres of grapes must be planted before the-
Okay, that would be my motion.
Operation is in place. And how about the sign?
I have another-
That's the second thing.
Well, I have another question related to this, if I could please.
Do you have any motions yet?
The hours of operation from six AM to ten PM for tasting room public and private events, six AM seems incredibly early for events.
It's not correct.
It's, I'm sorry, I apologize. But we can certainly change it to eight really quick, because we're talking about amendments right now. What, what is the hours you would like to operate?
May I approach?
Please.
Thank you.
If it's wrong in our staff here, we should find out what happens.
I believe earlier, Kevin, you read my hours of operation, and would you please reiterate those hours? And I, I-
Event show, six, excuse me, Mike, where is six AM to-
Six AM to ten PM is what it says.
Six AM?
Yeah.
He said that he wanted twelve, or twelve noon to ten PM. The six AM was added because for any events that may need setup for in the morning sort of thing.
That's standard for seven?
That was what I found in, in other special events. So, so maybe that could be moved to a different time and have a special events sort of time that, if he needs extra setup time or something, I don't know.
So, if you said eight o'clock, that would be better?
You can make it eight.
Well, we say eight o'clock.
Are you going to be okay with eight?
Four hours, you're talking noon.
Yes, I am. I would have a question of staff also, please. I think one of the things that I think I talked to you before going in, if I shorten those days of operation and shorten those hours of operation, because trust me, my wife wasn't too happy when I was telling her the twelve, twelve PM to ten PM either. That's not our intent. But do you, if you shorten up those hours of operation, do you then have to go back to the county and say, hey, I'm changing my hours to a longer? So, I think what we had talked about was to give it a larger window, and then if I run shorter than that, that will be no problem.
That's right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, if you run shorter, that's not a problem.
Okay, but if I would tell you guys today that these hours of operation are lower, then I would then have to come back to say they're more? I'm opening longer?
Correct.
That's correct.
So, that's why I put it for that window of time. So, I did work with staff on that to understand that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, my motion would be to-
We're going to change your hours of operations as well to eight o'clock.
I'm happy to do that.
But I'm just going down the list here. That was the first one. That's number, that's number nine.
If, if it's just primarily for setup, that's fine. I just thought a tasting room open at six AM sounded-
Get the hardcore wine.
We'll just stay up until they open.
That's right. Get the bar crowd out of Sioux Falls coming through there at six.
I can wait in the driveway.
Hopefully, they leave the county for justice purposes. Okay, so number two, then we've got federal permit. What was the other condition you were talking about ahead?
Plant an acre.
That's plant one acre must be in place, Mr. Chairman. In the section twelve-point-thirteen of the ag tourism, B one, G is in golf, it does say a minimum of a half-an acre product used in production. So, I just want to clarify.
Oh, okay.
It says in the book is a half-an acre.
Okay, then we should make it half-an acre.
It does also say in the same book an acre.
Does it?
Yes. Where was that at?
I'm happy with the half. That's one of the, that's a lot of vine.
And I, I was, I've noticed that, that there was a discrepancy, that it does say one acre. Yeah, in the very first sentence, winery is producing, selling product in tasting room, which must have one acre of crops grown.
Yeah, so the way, you're correct. The way I would read it is that you have to have a one acre, you know, some type of fruit production used for something that's ag tourism-related, and then the winery itself requires a minimum of a half-an acre of grapes.
So, you could have like a half-an acre of rhubarb and a half-an acre of, of grapes. And you, that would be one acre of apples, or apples, pears, whatever.
Okay. Yes.
Let's go.
That, okay, so then you mentioned the federal permit should be in place.
Yep.
And then what about the sign?
I, I can't support the sign the way it looks there. I think we have to stick to the thirty-two square foot on the road. That's what everyone else buys by. I agree with the chairman.
That's already part of the condition, isn't it?
It's written at thirty-two square feet. If you want to change that number, you can change it to whatever you want.
Thirty-two, that's number fifteen, shall not exceed. And you almost should state that includes all roof area. If you add that to that, to that motion.
Sure.
Okay, so the motion is as written with number nine, modified to eight to ten. Number thirteen, no, not number thirteen, I'm down to it, fifteen says not to exceed thirty-two feet, including all roof areas. Number eighteen would be one acre of fruit or vines must be planted. And number nineteen would be the federal winery permit must be in place before sales start. Does that cover it?
That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made. Second, any further discussion?
I had a question before we, before you vote. On, on condition number eighteen, is it that they have to have one acre of, of, let's see, one acre of crops grown on the site prior to the business opening? I want to make sure I understand what, what your intent is.
That's what I understood.
Mr. Larson, would that work for you?
Can you repeat the question, please? Well, the, really what, what I want clarification on is the condition, the way they have condition number eighteen written is that before you can open your business, you're going to have to have one acre of, of, one acre of crops.
Half acres of grapes and half acres of something else.
One acre, you're going to have to have half-an acre of grapes planted and a half-an acre of, of something else, or, or one acre of grapes. You need to have one acre of crops grown on your property before you operate your business, open it. That, is that your intent, or do you just, do you want to allow, do you want to allow?
That's what I thought.
I guess I'm not sure. I just, I want to have the discussion now so we're all on the same page. May I, again, I mean, I consider walk up front. It doesn't make any difference. I appreciate Commissioner Barthing talking about creating the entrepreneurial spirit, and I would-
I, I thought I was doing something nice. I thought I was doing something, uh, nice. I thought I was beautifying the area, I thought I was doing things well. The, the intent, I know you guys go all over this calling it a sign, I so wish that the whole thing got brought up when the county building inspector?
That's not correct. I got a complaint from a citizen. That is prior to the building inspector.
Okay, I did not hear of that, or anything, it would have been nice, because I would have scrapped the whole thing. The only thing that is now is obviously my $10,000 roof, if you guys are going to say that that can't be up there. So basically, that means I have to take it, your intent is, if you do not approve, that I have to take this all down. It would be interesting to see how many of this type of signage is out of compliance and where we do draw the line. Am I under different types of statutes than say someone raising beef on a farm that advertises their, their product, their farm, you know, and of all those things? I mean, I understand that I did not put wine for sale up there, I did not put my logo up on the rooftop. I put something up on that rooftop that I felt I was decorating my whole building with, and also I felt that through ag tourism, we're promoting a brand, no more than eat beef when you see eat beef. You don't see eat Bill Evans beef, you say eat beef, to create our products to be sold nationwide. Isn't that the intent of something such as this provision being made for those of us that have acreages in the county, to be able to, um, create this product, and create tourism, and create this type of entrepreneurial spirit throughout the state? Tonight I've heard that I'm opening up a liquor store. I mean, I'm sorry.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder.
You feel that I'm opening up, if I needed to open?
It's not a liquor store, Rich, what it is, is just, as I said earlier, look at the wineries around the county.
And mine is going to be substandard to that as some form of a dumpy old liquor store? Is that what you're saying, sir?
Mr. Chairman, we, we, let's not get too far afield here, we have, we have a motion.
Yes, we do. And, but all I'm saying is, to me, it's just, that's what you see from the Wall Lake corner when you look west. Is that appropriate for something that's supposed to be low keyed? Most of the wineries, like I say, they have thirty-two square foot signs.
I appreciate that, and I read that.
Very well.
And I read that, and that's, again, was not my intent, and I don't want to reiterate because we're going to, but I want to, I just believe that the wineries that you see, if you let, obviously, give us an opportunity to develop it, and you'll see as good a quality of winery as anyone else in the state. And I would contend that I would work with my partners throughout the South Dakota Wine Association, who I have contacted, to continue to follow their lead, because I am impressed with the wineries that are out there right now. I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel in any way, shape, or form by opening up some type of thing. I want to grow South Dakota grapes, I want to promote South Dakota products, and I want to use this historical building that's on this property, at one time, this is where the Wall Lake General Store was located. I want to tell a history of Wall Lake. So my intent, again, is, is I think of higher level than possibly where you think I'm bringing it down.
Okay, thank you, we need to move on.
I certainly, I appreciate that, but I certainly wanted to bring that point out, that, that I want that being said. As far as planting the acre of grapes before I can operate, I'll plant whenever I need to plant, I'm, I'll follow the rules, whatever the other wineries had to do, you know, I think that should be the same as what I will do. So, I, if I have to plant the acre before I can begin, uh, then that's what we'll do, we'll plant the acre of grapes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Did you, Mr. Chairman, you got the clarification looking forward to add on that?
Yeah, I think the, condition eighteen is going to say that one acre of crops have to be planted prior to the operation of the, of the winery or the, yeah, I get your intent.
Yeah, I would say just one acre, I would stipulate at least a half acre of the best be grapes. You know, I want, you know.
Just like the ordinance says, basically.
Yeah, just like the ordinance says.
Just like the ordinance says, yeah.
Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 O, same sign?
No.
The chairman will vote no, too, since I don't agree with the sign. Okay.
Wasn't the sign a separate issue?
What's in here?
It's in there.
I think there's other issues involved. Okay. We move on to our next issue, item that was passed by the board. Move on to our, is this a board of adjustment, or is it?
No, it's a recall.
Okay.
David Heinold, Planning Department, just have a recall, conditionally used, failure to meet the conditions of approval. On, on June third, or specifically the, it's condition number three, that outdoor storage area be screened with a ninety percent of basic defense, this is our RNS sanitation site, east of Wall Lake Corner. Here's the site plan, the screen fence should have been located on the east side, between the neighbor's property, which is a residentially property, the communitar property, which is where RNS sanitation is located. So on June third, 2014, Jeff Staff received a complaint from Fadi Bonson, who lives to the east, that, that RNS sanitation did not install the screen fence for, for the outdoor storage area. So I happened to inspect the property and confirm that the fence on the east side has not been installed yet. So on June third, I contacted Todd Snyder, who's here tonight, and asked him if he had a contractor lined up for the installation of the screen fence for the outdoor storage area. Mr. Snyder's told me that he's been, been busy working on other things this spring, and he's waiting for contractors, returnees, and queries. I informed, informed him that he is in violation of the conditions approved by the Planning Commission on January twenty-seventh, 2014, and that he would have two months to install the fence, if the fence has not been installed. By August fourth, 2014, then we will need to take corrective action on CUP fourteen dash zero five. So on August seventh, 2014, I met Mr. Snyder to get an update on the fence, and he mentioned that they were waiting. To get the sheet metal for the fence panels, he stated that the fence post should be up within the next couple of weeks. On August nineteenth, 2014, K Bonson, who lives to the east as well, the same property, asked what the next step in the process will be, since the screen fence has not been put up yet. I told her that RNS sanitation needs to have the fence put up by August twenty-ninth, or the item will need to be placed on the September Planning Commission meeting agenda tonight. On August twenty-ninth, I inspected the property and spoke with RNS sanitation staff members. They indicated the fence should be put up within a couple of days, and that topped its head. On September fifth, I, I spoke with Mr. Snyder, and he indicated that they are still working with contractor to get the fence panels. He noted that the post holes were filled in, because they were not ready to install the posts, and it is, and as a safety precaution. He mentioned that it has become more challenging than he thought, because the location of the fence is so close to the drainage way on the east side of the property, that it's always too wet and muddy. He understands that the fence needs to be put up soon as, as soon as possible before winter comes and the ground is frozen. And on September fifteenth, I inspected the property, and the fence still has not been put up yet, and I did speak with him a couple of days earlier, and Scout and Kevin went out, and they inspected, and the fence has not been put up yet. So Staff finds that the petitioner has had a reasonable amount of time to install the fence, and recommends that the fence is not installed prior to October twenty-seventh, which is the next Planning Commission meeting, then conditionally use permit fourteen dash zero five should be revoked. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Questions? We shall hear from the petitioner then. Thank you very much.
I have Todd Snyder's on our RNS sanitation, on the south of the color. Everything's pretty close to what David said here, and in the spring, it wasn't very difficult to get in there, because of the, I have to go through the drainage dish on the east side, get up on the bank on the other side to put the posts in, and I didn't really want to tear that all up, if I could possibly help, but it was wet until probably two-thirds of the way through June, and at that time I had lined up, so getting some posts from power lines that was being taken down out by Salem, and it was supposed to be taken down in July. Well, one week went past after another, and of course, it didn't get done in time. So when David came to me here a couple of weeks ago, I decided, well, I better find some other posts. Went online, Craigslist, found some posts over by Rock Rapids, Iowa, made arrangements for some, picked them up last Thursday morning, paid $600 for them, and before the end of the day, I found out the posts that I really wanted in the first place were available. So I wouldn't get them Friday morning, but still cost me $600 to buy other posts, because I could have got these good posts free, so I was kind of waiting for those after, in July.
When will the fence be done?
When will the fence be done? Well, definitely by October twenty-seventh.
That's all I need to know.
I have everything, I have, I have all the posts there, I have the sheet metal there, I have everything on site, so.
Okay, thank you.
So I would make a motion that if the fence is not installed prior to October twenty-seventh, the conditionally use permit will be revoked.
All right. Motion is second, all favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign.
Uh, no new business, other than, I think David gives an update.
Just a finalization of the date for the RNS sanitation workshop at Humboldt Community Center, six thirty to seven thirty on the sixteenth.
Sixteenth of October?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, under county, county commission items, I do want to report that the rezoning fourteen dash five, which was for the, the commercial R one at Renner Corner, that the county commission overturned your recommendation and approved it as the petitioner had requested, with the four hundred feet, which was the four acres of commercial in the front, and then the thirteen acres of residential in the back. So that becomes effective on the twenty-eighth.
Any comments, Commissioner Barth?
I think so, but I don't remember anymore.
Well, I think that they, the applicant made a good, you know, and it wasn't anything that we didn't all agree with, that if, no one wants to build houses on the, along the highway, and that really is, I think, what the county commission focused on and decided that, um, it was probably best suited for commercial rather than anything else, based on what the traffic and the, and the.
Well, the state refused to study air traffic anymore. However, they did do something on our road, on Highway forty-two by Cherry Lake, they slowed us down to fifty-five miles an hour. The difference between that area and Renner area is, we have a left turn lane in there, plus the development putting two right turn lanes, I don't know if the state paid for it, or Van Busker did, but, so it's a totally different road. But that's north of Renner, that's kind of a scary road there.
It is. Yeah, and, you know, there was a bit of a chicken and egg there, where the state said that if you tell us what you're, where you're going to put here, we'll figure out the road, as opposed to us saying, "Why don't you figure out the road, and then we'll decide what to put here."
The state did ask for the, the proposed, the general development plan that Mr. Sagat had proposed, and I did forward that to, I can't remember what his name was, Jansen, Mr. Jansen, Scott Jansen. So they do have a copy of his preliminary sketch plan showing the commercial and the, and the residential uses. So that's all I have for under county commission report items.
Any others have anything else? Otherwise. Would you, Mr. Chairman?
Until nine AM.